For this meeting to order. Uh, para traducción en español en vivo pueden escanear el. Sado en la última página de la agenda.
Let us pray. Precious Lord, please give us guidance in this meeting because a lack of guidance causes a nation to fall. But victory is won through many adversaries. Lord, let us not be misguided in this meeting so that we do not. Lead to discussion that produce ineffective results. I pray that you're direct. That you direct our steps so that this meeting can achieve our kingdom aims. We place you at the center of this. Amen.
Or could we get the role?
Councilmember Fossey. Councilmember Pimentel.
Here.
Councilmember Call.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rudebe.
Here.
Mayor Hernandez.
Here. Um, are there any changes to the agenda? Uh, conflict of interest, any council authority members staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare the conflict at this time. And seeing none, um, we are going to go to presentations. So seven one. A presentation from Public Works Utilities is recommended. Public or utilities.
Mayor and council, our public works director, Cody Bridgewater will provide the report.
Mayor, members of council, good evening, how are you today? So the city of Riverbank Public Works Department falls under myself. And just a little bit about me, uh, Cody Bridgewater, I've been here with the city of Riverbank for about two years now. I started in December of twenty twenty-two. Uh, prior to that, I was with the city of Oakdale for seven and a half years. And worked my way up through the ranks, starting in wastewater treatment and with uh, Jamestown Sanitary District and moved on uh, from there. So City of Riverbank Public Works, who we are and what we do. Public Works Department for the City of Riverbank consists of administration, water, sewer collections, streets, wastewater treatment and fleet maintenance. And here is an organizational chart of how we are structured. You can see we have the director, which is myself, public work superintendent. We who actually doubles as the wastewater treatment plant supervisor, and he has three operators underneath him. Uh, we have our city mechanic, who is the one and only who works on our vehicles here and equipment. We have the public work supervisor, which oversees street sewer and storm drain with eight employees underneath him. Our water supervisor, who oversees the water distribution system and well sites, has six employees underneath him. We have an administrative analyst, two and administrative clerk that work in the office with myself. So the administration portion of public works. We provide direct conduit of communication between the public and public work staff. Uh, the girls work hard. Daily to provide high quality customer service and ensure the needs of the community are met. With the use of our mobile MMS work order system, which you can see at the top right there, um, each of those little individual dots are different types of. Assets the city has, whether it's a well site, a sewer lift station, um, maybe a street light or a fire hydrant or a work order that needs to take uh, be handled. So the public works administration consists of the administrative clerk and the admin analyst. Um, administrative clerk usually handles most of the phone calls from the public and will create the work orders. The administrative analyst helps myself and other public work staff with, you know, state reports and. Any additional uh, help that the administrative clerk may need assistance with as well. Then we have our water division. It's fine gentlemen, you see here. So the water department provides safe and reliable drinking water to the citizens of Riverbank. And this is done through our wells, our water distribution pipelines and water service lines. We often receive calls from citizens for issues with water pressure, leaks, taste and odors. And other water quality issues and regular maintenance is required to ensure the delivery of service is not interrupted. Uh, one thing that's rather unique about Riverbank is, for one, we are strictly well sites, uh, groundwater pumping wells. We do not have surface water. That is provided to the public as wells only, and we are a non-chlorinated system. Uh, for regular maintenance, every now and then we'll have to chlorinate. But ninety-nine percent of the time out of the year, there's no chlorine in our water. We have very high quality drinking water that we can. Provide to our customers on a regular basis and. We look forward to the opportunity to be able to continue to do that. So a little bit of information about water services, who is responsible? A lot of the calls that we get um, at public works is, hey, you have a leak. Or there's a leak in my water in my yard. Um, can you guys come out and fix it? So what we have to do is we have to both uh, check the service line itself and also educate the public sometimes of whose responsibility is what. So the water service is actually, uh, the city maintains all the main lines, the laterals and occurrences within the city right away on city property or easements. And it's the responsibility of all water users to maintain the water service line from, but not including the water meter. To the outlets of the line inclusive of city easements. I have a little picture here to show you. It's a lot easier to understand. Uh, the city is responsible for the main in the street, the service line, the meter and the connection to the service line to the house. Outside of that meter up into the house is responsibility of the property owner. So if there's a leak. Obviously inside, that's going to be their responsibility. If it's in their yard, it's their responsibility. If it's from the meter or in the meter box or in the street, then the city will take care of that. Then we move on to our sewer and streets division. So once water is used in a household or a business, it's disposed of through the sewer collection system and the city of Riverbank has about seventy-two miles of sewer main. As well as nine lift stations. And this is a conveyance of pipes that take wastewater from the point of use, which is a house or a business. To the wastewater treatment plant that is on the north side of the river adjacent to Jacob Meyer Park. Uh, sewer collection system is made up of sewer laterals, sewer mains and sewer lift stations. Regular maintenance is required for both systems to ensure delivery of service is not interrupted. Maintenance is required by both the city and the customers. Sewer division is maintained by a public work supervisor and five maintenance workers, which is now eight. I should have updated that. I apologize. Um, but when we talk about sewer maintenance, um, so you'll see some mailers that go out. Couple of times a year that say, you know, don't flush, quote unquote, flushable wipes, don't pour grease down the drain. These kinds of different things. And the reason being is these things cause plugs in our main lines or also your sewer laterals. So oftentimes we get calls from residents, hey, I have a backup, my sewer isn't flowing, so we will have to come out. And the first thing that we'll do is we'll check the main line to make sure that there's free flow in the main line. If there's free flow in the main line, then we notify the customer, hey, the issue is going to be. Your responsibility and I'll get to that in a little bit on the responsibility of laterals and main lines, but. Uh, if we keep those things out of our toilets, our sinks, um, a lot of people, including myself, I've been guilty of this. Uh, we think of our. Uh, garbage disposal in the sink as an actual place to throw garbage, right? Well, these things really aren't meant to be in the sewer, so. We have to remember that basically, um, anything that's solid, that is quote unquote flushable other than toilet paper. Um, feminine hygiene products, those things don't belong in the sewer. Uh, the only thing that belongs there is the waste and the toilet paper. So the sewer laterals i- is another issue that we get a lot of calls on. Customers call and say, hey, we have problems with flow. Um, so the responsibility of the sewer lateral. Is actually the responsibility of the property owner or the business owner, the resident of the home. The property owner is responsible for constructing, repairing and maintaining the entire sewer lateral between the building and the sewer main line. Including the lateral and the building sewers, the tap, the saddle, the Y connection fitting at the main. Cities shall not be financially responsible for any sewer lateral construction, operation, maintenance, repair, abandonment. Or other costs whatsoever, except for the city itself or its contractor reconstructs or realigns the sewer main. Thereby necessitating the reconnection of sewer lattes to the uh, sanitary sewer main. So basically, if we went into the construction project, we changed the location or the elevation of the sewer main. We're not going to put that on the customer and say, hey, it's your responsibility to rehook up. We are the ones that are doing the work, so we're going to make sure that they still have continued service after the fact. And here's another little. Picture depicting the responsibilities. Um, every city is different, every entity is different. Uh, some may take it to the property line, some may take it to a clean out that's in the property, but in the city of Riverbank. The sewer main is the city's responsibility, the connection and the lateral to the property. Is the responsibility of the property owner or the resident there. So preventing lateral plugs and issues. Do not pour fats, oils or grease down the drains. It doesn't work if you just turn the water really hot and pour it down. Don't do that. It still solidifies out in your lateral, so don't worry, it's it's going to cause a problem. You're not, you're not helping anything. Um, collect waste and cooking oil and grease in a container with a tight fitting lid and dispose of it in your trash container. Do not flush wipes, diapers or feminine hygiene products, even if they're labeled flushable. As homeless age, roots often infiltrate sewer laterals. The so-called flushable products cash catch on these intrusions or in grease buildup and form the clogs. Don't plant trees or large shrubs near sewer lines. Roots grow towards sewer line cracks in search of water, often forming root balls that clog the line. And when buying a home, consider having the sewer lateral inspected. Licensed plumbers. Video inspection may reveal cracks, breaks, offsets or root intrusion. Pipe need to be, may need to be cleaned, repaired or replaced. So the picture on the top there, that's uh, flushable wipes and what they can do inside a sewer main. That one is actually inside a pump itself, uh, but they will ball up and and form a plug faster than you could realize. Um, they plug our pumps, so our guys are out sometimes in the middle of the night, two, three in the morning, having to pull pumps because pumps are clogged, can't pump out of the lift station. And then the line there on the bottom is a line that is filled with grease. So that's what happens to the fats, the oils, the greases, when you, when they solidify in your pipes, they'll eventually, almost like our arteries, right? They tell us not to eat a bunch of fatty foods. It does the same thing in a pipeline as it does in our, in our arteries. So we want to make sure that we're able to provide service because this this grease and these uh, rags, they'll build up in the main line. You might get them out of your lateral, but they'll they'll build up in the main line as well and then cause issues there as well. So if a resident believes they have a sewer problem, they can contact Public Works Department. First, we ask that they contact us first before they contact the plumber. Because if it's an issue on our end, we can relieve it and everybody can go about their business and it's no issues. Um, if it's clear, we'll let the customer know that the main line is clear and that they need to contact a plumber to. To handle um, the plug that's in their line. We do offer a service for free. Once the plumber relieves the plug, we will go back out and we will actually camera their lateral for them. And show uh, see if there's any issues with maybe the structure of their pipe, if there's an offset, if there's roots. So we provide that service free of cost, uh, but they do have to have the plumber relieve the plug first.
Cody, real quick.
Yes.
Who picks up the calls after hours on the slide before that?
So we have our office number, the seven one two eight. That's the same number we call. Uh, during hours and after hours, after hours, it rolls over to the standby phone. And our standby personnel rotates every Monday. So they'll receive a phone call or a voicemail and they'll respond accordingly. The street sewer, or sorry, street sidewalks and trees also falls under the street and sewer department. Um, so the streets department, what they do is they maintain and repair roadway surfaces on city streets, including sidewalks, curbs and gutters. The maintenance personnel repair potholes, cracks and repair damaged pavement, provide street markings, traffic signal installation or a sign installation. And repair, streetlight repairs and graffiti removal. Staff also provides emergency support to Riverbank Police Services and provide sandbags during flooding events. Uh, the. Picture there is a pothole, uh, typically what we'll do for potholes if. If we have the time to do it properly, we'll go out, we'll grind the pothole out and put new pavement back. If we're in a rush, we'll go cold patch it and leave it. When we go and we actually get, you know, two or three tons of hot mix, then we come back to these locations, pull out the cold patch and do a proper repair on it. Um, sometimes it's not advantageous to to go get hot mix for maybe two or three potholes, so we'll we'll build a list and. And then repair them properly after we have enough in order to get a full load of hot asphalt. The hot asphalt sticks a lot better and is a more permanent solution. The cold patch works good for maybe, you know, two, three months. But after a while, it'll begin to push out and and we'll be back there again. So we like to do a proper repair on the potholes when we can. And then the bottom right there is a crack seal machine. The reason that you want to do crack sealing, crack filling is. The initial stages of road degradation is cracking. Um, as time goes on, water infiltrates into the cracks. You get expansion construct contraction from the moisture um, entering and uh, exiting the subbase underneath the asphalt. And that eventually leads to an alligator crack, which causes the potholes. So if we can get out and do crack sealing and do preventative maintenance, we can save our roads and they can actually last a lot longer. We'll avoid having as many potholes and it actually saves us a lot of work. It's a lot of work, you know, upfront, but again, preventative maintenance, we get a lot more lifetime out of our streets. And it it in the long run, it's not the prettiest thing. It looks like spider webs out in the middle of the street, but. It's a relatively inexpensive investment in an expensive piece of uh, infrastructure that would. We would end up having to replace at a future date. So when it comes to the streets, the pothole cracks and drainage issues in the street and gutters are the responsibility of Silver City of Riverbank to maintain. There's a number of ways to inform us when these issues arise. You can call the eight six nine seven one two eight number, or we also have a work order request tracker um, online on the city website. And you can follow that link and you can put in a work order issue. And it will automatically create a work order for us in the mobile MMS system. And the girls will get an alert the following day when they're at work or, you know, if it's happens during hours. They'll get an email saying, hey, you have a new work order and we can assign it accordingly. So sidewalks are another sticky issue. Um, per the California Street and Highway Code, section fifty-six ten. It's the responsibility of the property owner to maintain the sidewalk adjacent to their property in a safe condition. Cracked, lifted and damaged sidewalks cause trip hazards for the public and need to be fixed in a timely manner. Often people call and say, hey, you your sidewalk is buckled, it's lifted, it's a trip hazard and we have to go out and inform and educate. Uh, but we partner with the property owners. We will do the removal, the saw cut and the hollow way of the damaged concrete. Uh, at no cost and uh, provided that they have an encroachment permit with the city to replace the concrete and put it back. Uh, so. Initially, it's kind of standoffish as to why is it my responsibility to maintain the sidewalk, but when we explain, hey, we want to help you. Uh, we want to partner with you to take care of this and we will do the removal and the demo for them. Uh, it it goes a lot smoother after that.
Um, in some cities, there's trees that cause it.
That's correct.
The city doesn't really own any trees within that area anymore, right?
That's correct. Yeah, I will actually touch on that next. Trees. Residents who live in an area containing landscaping strips are responsible for the irrigation, maintenance and upkeep of the trees adjacent to their property. Neglected tree maintenance can cause issues with roots damaging or lifting sidewalks, curb and gutter. And even the street branches should be trimmed to not approach into oncoming traffic and maintained at a height that allows for pedestrians to use the sidewalks. Without concern of being injured by low hanging limbs. Uh, one thing to clarify. Oftentimes, even if you don't have a split sidewalk where you have a landscape strip in the middle. You have the sidewalk and then the adjacent curb and gutter. The curb and gutter is the responsibility of the city. So if there's damage to the curb and gutter and the sidewalk, then we partner with the property owner. We'll place the curb and gutter and then they can replace the sidewalk. Being that it's their area of responsibility. Then we have our wastewater treatment plant operators. So our wastewater treatment plant treats and disposes of wastewater collected from within the city. It's located north of the uh, Riverbank across, we're actually in San Joaquin County. It's kind of strange and cities in Stanislas, but the the treatment plant's in San Joaquin County. Uh, and it borders the north side of Jacob Meyer Park. So we have one supervisor and three maintenance workers out there and consists of eight percolation evaporation basins and two aeration treatment ponds. And we get an average of about one point six, we're seeing closer to one point seven million gallons per day right now. And we are currently in the sixty percent design phase for the Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project. Uh, which is moving along rather uh, quickly. I, we expect to have sixty percent design done, I believe sometime in May. And here's just a snapshot of the new facility. It will be upgrades to the headwork system, addition of a grit removal system, moving into an oxidation ditch treatment system. And then secondary clarifiers, and then that would move to filtration and UV disinfection with a solids handling component too. Um, our goal is to use the recycled water to sell to the adjacent farmers and. Anybody else that may be interested in purchasing that water for use. So that we can offset the pumping that the local farmers do on our local groundwater basin. So we, our hope is. To have these farmers utilize all of that one point six, one point seven million gallons per day during the irrigation season. So that they're not having to pump out of the ground. Uh, it saves them money on pumping costs and wells having to be installed. And it also saves our aquifer from being overdrawn. And then our fleet management department, this is Josh, he's our one and only mechanic. He uh, he picks care of fifty plus vehicles and twenty plus large pieces of equipment as well as a. A multitude of small equipment and he is the only one. So if we have an issues, he he's on top of it and. You know, the guy's busy, that's for sure. Uh, it ranges from cars, pickup trucks, vans. We have, you know, some larger equipment. We have a vacuum truck that is actually. You know, about sixty thousand pounds when full. So, you know, it goes from a small weed eater up through the back truck and he maintains all of it. Like I said, he is a very busy man and he has to know how to op work and operate on um. Gas vehicles, diesel vehicles, and we even have some compressed natural gas vehicles that he works on too. And just a little summary of the responsibility of the water and sewer and I would be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
No questions, just a shout out to you guys, you know, I've been working with you guys for quite some time now and I've forwarded over complaints from the residents on potholes. There was even one time that you guys actually fixed the pothole that very same day. So just kind of comparing um, Riverbank, uh, the response times there. Compared to maybe like the county and some of the other cities around. So just kudos to your, to your whole streets division team, your, your entire department. So keep going. Thank you.
Very much.
Yeah. Um, all right, seven point two, a presentation to review the cheese and wine festival of this last year, twenty twenty-four.
Michael Patton, our director of Parks and Recreation will pro- uh, provide this report.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, so we're excited about, to talk about twenty twenty-four, uh, what happened this past cheese and wine festival. For the new council members, um, last year on this time, the Parks and Recreation Department did a presentation on what happened in twenty twenty-three. And since this is kind of our big event of the year, we want to kind of give you guys a report and impact or. Uh, give you feedback on what we, what we saw and then give you an opportunity to let us know what your thoughts are. Um, for the new council members that are here, for those that don't know, in past years, the city would contract this event out. It would have someone come in and plan the event, organize it. Um, over recent years, it might have been some disgrunt- discrepancies with how the event went. And so we approached the council with some ideas and last year was our first year as a, as a department running it, planning, organizing and making the show happen. Um, so what we want to do with our presentation today, we're going to talk about, uh, kind of go analysis what we, what happened with the event, kind of go over some numbers. Uh, we'll talk about some of the new things we did in twenty twenty-four, uh, some of the pros and cons that happened in twenty twenty-four. Talk about some of the financials, the staff feedback that we received or talked among staff of, you know, what went well, what didn't go well. We do better in twenty twenty-five and then want to provide an opportunity for, for council members to write questions, write answers and give us your, your input. So in twenty twenty-four, we had over a hundred and seventy-six vendors. Compared to twenty twenty-three, there were roughly about sixty to seventy total. So we really up that. Um, the big focus was um, really focused on the local entrepreneurs, local businesses here. Um, part of that council back then improved a significant reduction in vendor fees in order to allow the local uh, local business to participate easily. Um, in our event, we do have a wine tasting sessions in our community center. Uh, we sold three hundred and nine tickets that um, for that event. Um, car show, we had a fantastic one, had fifty-three registrants, about ten performances on two different stages, thirteen different sponsors. Um, total revenue we had for the event was forty-six thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-one cents. Total expenditures was fifty-four thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-four cents. Uh, we do have a kind of more of a breakdown on a later page. We'll kind of talk a little about that a little more later. And day of staff hours, a hundred and sixty-four. So we had staff, but part-time, full-time employees. Uh, we talked to my staff, they saw me out there from sunset to sunrise and sunset. So, um, it was a very uh, very fun day for staff to be out there all day. So in twenty twenty-four, some of the new things we saw with festival length, um, this city's traditionally used the festival being a two-day affair. Uh, we decided to break that down to one day, the reason being with the department taking it on, we have. A lot going on in the fall with our Dia de los Muertos, Christmas Parade, Haunted Hay Ride. Taking this on would then, it is quite the challenge. So making a one day that would ease the burden on our department, our staff. Uh, we adjust the fee structure.
We adjust the fee structure with the previous contractors, the fees to participate in the event for vendors for. Locals that want to do the the wine tasting, the fees were, the feedback we heard, the fees were very high. And so with permission from council, we reduce those fees, try to be more economical and be conscious of the locals that want to participate more in the event. We did update the orientation layout. We moved the car show down to this side of town as opposed to towards the community center. Stages were the same location, vendors were a little bit different. Back in the old day where you had vendors going from third all the way down to seventh and eighth. We tried to replicate as much as that as we can, as we could. Organizational controls, so the Parks Recreation Department oversaw the entirety of the event. As opposed to having a contractor and the department overseeing the contract. We did put a huge emphasis on the wine tasting and you'll see that come in our expend our budget. The feedback we've heard from those that attend the event was, this is the only place where you can purchase or I say consume. Wide variety of wines. But the fact we gone from the past wine tastings is it's not worth the ticket price. With this year, we put a lot more money into it where we've heard people say this was a steal of a deal. And then community engagement, we focused on getting community input. One of the big, one of the things we did was. We do the annual wine glass. We put out to community vote, get their feedback of what style glass they want, kind of get that input. We've done other things to get surveys and kind of give them but or allow the community to give the input. If you attend the festival, you also notice that we had aprons with as we're leaving. QR code to scan a survey to let us know what you thought of the event, what we can do better next year. And so we were looking, trying to make sure we had the community give us their input throughout the event and after. So some of the positives that we heard from the event, again, focusing on that locals, we had a lot of local vendors that. Were able to participate. The fees, the lowest fee we had was seventy five dollars to participate for ten by ten. I think the previous year was three hundred some odd dollars. Again, the promoter that was there before was from Stockton. Being Stockton or Bay Area businesses participate, this is easy money. Riverbank businesses, it's a it's a pretty pain to pay three hundred dollars. So we did put a lot of focus on downtown or even on downtown businesses. If you go into the venue, you notice that this stretch right here was pretty vacant. We heard some some comments on it and there was an intent with that was to have the downtown businesses promote their product without being covered with vendors blocking their way. So we had some intent focusing on the on the locals. We did hear a lot of appreciation from vendors, well organized. A lot of people enjoyed their location. A lot of vendors were successful in the event, a lot of that contribute to the cost of participate. Perfectly weathered day and everything kind of lined up there. The event was well planned and executed. We worked well with other departments, police department, fire. Everyone seemed to be on aware of what was going on the week of the month that leading to the event. So there wasn't any confusion or question on who what's going on here. And then overall, we've heard a lot of positive feedback to little to no negative feedback. Whether it be on social media or in person. We've heard, my favorite comment was, it brought back the feeling what it was thirty, forty years ago, and that was kind of what we were striving to do. So some of the improvements we want to do in twenty twenty five, we really want to focus on resource management. We're going to try to establish plans to acquire resources and materials in advance. We. Did a lot of last second shopping that brought a lot of stress at the last minute to get everything in place. We're also going to try to establish more boundaries within the department. We've had a lot of organizations that participate in the event that rely on our resources. The day of, we were scrambling to accommodate other organizations and focus on the day of of things that need to get done. So that put a huge stress and strain on on this on staff out on the day of. We do want to create additional programming. We we get to the budgeting, well, there's some questions there, we'll we'll discuss. We had ideas for programming, but I was trying to be more fine, are physically responsible. We cut some of the programming back. We had some things there, but in twenty twenty five, we want to be able to throw in some more fun activities for families and for individuals to participate in the event. We do want to get a little bit more local involvement. We want to encourage more residents and business to be involved with the day of operations. We had some volunteers that helped out. But again, there's some. Things that would have been nice to have someone take the reins instead of having staff kind of. Multitasking, take care of certain certain aspects through them. And then financial recovery, continue working to develop strategies to work towards a hundred percent cost recovery for the event. So here's our budget outline for twenty twenty four. You'll see that on the left column, we have our actuals. The middle column is what we projected and. The right column is kind of the difference between the actual and budgeted. So and then the actual, we received about forty six thousand four hundred thirty four dollars in revenue. Expenditures, we spent fifty four thousand six hundred and eighteen change. So that comes out to, we lost eight thousand one hundred eighty three dollars. In the budget side, you kind of see there's quite a wide discrepancy of, you know, what we actually had to what was budgeted, both on revenues and expenditures. Our thoughts are, was this kind of, again, our first year running the event. There's a lot of unexpected costs or revenues that we did not anticipate till like the week of that just came out of nowhere. Also with the shift of being a one, two day event to one day event. Kind of trying to forecast based on last year's numbers weren't wasn't the most effective. And so with this year coming up, now that we have kind of a season under our our belt here. We think with our projected budget, we can be a little bit more accurate. But to kind of give counsel reference. These were the actuals from last previous years. So last year, the city lost twenty four thousand seven hundred sixty four dollars. Previous year, twenty two thousand one thirty nine. And then twenty twenty one, they had a not a pretty good year, was just losing this little less than nineteen hundred dollars. So I want to go back to here with the actuals and kind of give council opportunity to ask any questions or. Yeah, see if something could help answer.
Just some clarification. So the the budgeted, the the merchandise line item line, forty seven fifty. That's what we bought in merchandise in the hopes of reselling? Is that, am I reading that right?
So that's what we were planning on buying in the hopes of reselling. What we looked at was. We didn't want to occupy staff to be at a table trying to sell.
Right.
And just didn't have the time, resources to do that. So what we did was we're like, hey. We had the ideas of buying all these different things outside wine glasses. We did not buy those items. We just bought the wine glasses themselves. So with the forty seven fifty, the idea was we're going to buy a lot of stuff in order to resell. We just didn't buy it. So.
I've heard and talked to several citizens, especially like. Or I should say, actually just last week, which has been a while since it. And they commented that they really enjoyed the wine tasting, that it was so much better than it has been in years. So whatever you did, let's keep that going.
Agreed. And and on that same note, so I'm sure you're going to talk about what you're going to do differently. It seems like that was the. Biggest expense from the budgeted to actual. But I agree. I mean, it was great and I think what people were most looking forward to. It it feels like overall, like. Your department really accomplished what we had set out to do is start bringing it back. To what it was before. So it looks great. And so that's the only one that I was looking at, the wine tasting.
Yeah. So one of the biggest expenses we had was was wine. We did approach a couple, the idea was to have wineries come in and they. Bring their own product in and they, you know, distribute their product for others to sample at no cost. We did have a few that did that, but. We did have a handful of winners that we reached out to that were like, we're going to wait till next year, see how things go. So the hope is now that we've established such a good turnout, the wine vendors that did show up. Loved it. They said it was the best experience they've had in wine tastings. They plan on inviting their friends to come over. And we did have a surplus of wines that we are properly storing right now. So that way, hopefully our wine expenses isn't gonna, we're not buying more wine. Or as much wine like we did last year.
Well, just just another quick comment. So yes, we did have that eight thousand eight thousand dollar kind of deficit, right? But I mean, your team did pretty, pretty cool to do to close a sixteen thousand dollar gap, right? So that's that's pretty amazing. I think that we we still have that opportunity, the gap that you were talking about from the hundred and seventy six vendors. To the car show, I think there's an opportunity there to kind of continue to reach out and build those, build those relationships with those businesses. So. Other than that, I just heard nothing but praise for for the for your entire department. I know I'm giving out two kudos, so that's that's my max for the day. So but. Appreciate everything you guys have done.
There's no other comments or questions about the budget, I'll move on. So so staff feedback, so after the event, we did a thing at Pizza Plus to thank all the staff and kind of went over. You know, our our feedback loop of well, what didn't go well, what's the recommendation? So staff, they really enjoyed that was a one day event. Again, having a haunted hayride event two weekends after and then Dia de los Muertos the weekend after, we're able to kind of. Don't have to strain ourselves way too much. And I think the day of operations of, you know, dealing with road closures and having everything goes was really nice. We felt like we did a really good job and so we'd love to continue playing the festival and take the challenge on twenty twenty five to make the improvement. And like you guys mentioned, there's a lot of energy momentum, kind of making that U-turn from the trajectory where the event was going. We'd like to bring it more upwards. Again, as mentioned, where we would like to acquire additional assistance from volunteers to ease the day of burdens. And then just minor adjustments to improve the 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 day of logistics and execution where. There's just a lot of those small things where you think you could handle, but when you start taking on all the small things, it's not one big, large thing that you're trying to. Make everyone happy and accommodate. So I think we're trying to, you know, work on. Minimizing those day of. Issues that, you know, if we know it's going to be something that we can handle beforehand, organize that better. But yeah, once we turn time over, any questions from council, any comments, feedback or anything that would be nice to, you want to see in twenty twenty five?
Any other questions or comments? You guys are doing awesome, apparently. Thank you. All right. So public comments, at this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda within subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, L R A board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes as stated. And time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. So do we have any public comments?
Mayor, we have Charlie Neal, S C F P D board representing, coming up to give an update.
I presented each one of you a copy of this report that I have from the fire department. Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District was reviewed by the Insurance Service Officer. I S O for its fire protection rating. After the rating, the district was rated as an I S O class two. Prior ratings were an I S O class three. These ratings will go into effect in March of twenty twenty five. The reason for the lower lowering of the rating is the partnership with our surrounding agencies and contacts. Congratulations to our most recent medics. Captain Austin Luna, Captain Michael, Craftry Engineer. John and. And engineer. Coy Wesley, who have passed their test and are beginning to work as medics. Currently, the district has sixteen paramedics who provide advanced life support at the district's. Five fire stations. The goal is to have eighteen by the end of twenty twenty five. Station twenty six, twenty four and twenty three have passed inspection. And all of Stanislaus County Fire Protection District can provide. A L S services, carry when a paramedic is on duty. Engine twenty six. They fired to silicon containers causing estimated one billion dollars in damage. The fire occurred in a machine used to burn off byproducts of the coating process. Applied to cans produced at the facility. Engine twenty six was the first unit to arrive on the scene. Firefighters found a machine located two hundred and fifty feet inside the building. It had caught on fire. An emergency exit was created about fifty foot from the fire to facilitate. Personnel movement and movement and ensure safety during operations. Crews worked for about three hours to cool the fire and make the area safe. For establishment. Once the fire was controlled, crews would open the machine and fully extinguished the fire. There were several challenges this fire presented. The fire was deep inside the building, requiring time and effort to access. The machine was elevated, made it difficult for firefighters to access the fire directly. Catwalks around the machine were initially unsafe due to the high heat from the fire. Final establishments were carried out once the area was deemed safe. Board President Bernard, along with his wife, Kathy Bernard. Hosted Operation Hope and Love from California at Station twenty six. They partnered with Southern South Carolina resident. Lauren Holmes of the Forgotten Clothes Closet to distribute donated clothing items to hurricane. Hurricane victims. We had an excellent turnout. And we thank President Bernard and Kathy Bernard for their selfishness in hosting this event for the victims.
So much.
Thank you, guys.
Mayor, we have one on Zoom wishing to speak. Norma, I can't ask them to unmute.
Hi there, can you hear me okay?
Yes, please say your name and your comment. Go ahead.
Yes. Hi, everyone. My name is Cynthia Prieta Diaz. And I am a new resident living here and or along the Riverbank Oakdale area. By profession, I am a public health analyst and I am also an avid runner. So I have been running through Riverbank towards Modesto and during my runs. I have observed a significant amount of litter, particularly concentrated around our transit stops. So inspired by the city of Riverbank's motto of being a city of action. I wanted to elevate that I will be hosting a community cleanup to help address the litter. And the event is scheduled for this Monday, January twentieth, from nine AM to twelve PM. While I will be encouraging all residents to participate, either cleaning up their own yards. Or just their neighborhoods, I will be focusing at the intersection of Patterson Road. And Eighth Street with an emphasis on removing tobacco. Or toxic litter like cigarette butts and other tobacco product waste that I have seen. And I was so excited that I saw that Cody was here. So just wanted to elevate all the great work that Public. Works Department does. And I also wanted to elevate that they had mentioned that they will be supporting the event by hauling away everything that is collected that day. And I also wanted to say at this time that I am happy to be part of this community. And eager to contribute to all of the great things that you're already doing. And also see this as a warm invitation for future collaborations with the city. Or others in the community so that we can start thinking beyond the cleanups. And pivot to more preventative measures like advancing a circular economy. Thank you.
You, any other public comments?
Yes, we have one more on Zoom here.
Hi, this is Darlene Barbara Martinez in Riverbank on Glow Road. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to thank all of our volunteers for participating in our senior citizen. Christmas party brunch that we had on Friday, February twentieth. And then also for all of the volunteers that helped out with our Toys for Tots. Toy giveaway and our breakfast with Santa. For that on the Saturday, the twenty first. It was truly an awesome event. We served almost four hundred students and about a. I think it was a hundred and fifty three families. So I just want to thank the community. For coming out and helping with the volunteerism. It was actually awesome, great to see everyone out there. And we made a lot of children very happy this Christmas season. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. Have a good evening. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mayor, that is all.
Consent, all items that stand on the consent calendar would be acted upon by a single action unless requested by individual council authority member for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation will be to accept and act it upon a motion. So item nine point one, waive readings. Do I read through these whole titles?
Yes.
All readings of awarenesses and resolutions except by title are waived. Item nine two, approval of the city council and local redevelopment authority board minutes for December tenth, twenty twenty four. Item nine three, authorization for out-of-state travel. Request from Mayor Hernandez to attend the U S Conference for Mayor's Winter Meeting in Washington, D C from January seventeenth to nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Item nine four, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for on-call G I S services with the North State Planning and Development Collective related to assisting the community development department with ongoing J S efforts and activities. Item nine five, resolution authorizing the amendment of the City of Riverbank Compensation Plan to reflect the new salary range for city clerk position from range one fifty-six to one sixty-one. So are there any council comments or questions or anything that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Okay, so do we have a motion?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated.
I'll go ahead and second. Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Prima Tell?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Libe?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Alright, so new business. Item eleven one, nomination appointment of the vice mayor to serve for the year of twenty twenty five. So I would like to nominate Councilmember Fossey to be vice mayor for twenty twenty five. I feel that, you know, you've served in the past before and though I want to say, you know, you're very, very committed. I know all of our council members are very committed, but I would like to ask you to be vice mayor for this coming year. Would you like to accept this appointment?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Hey, and if I could have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item eleven point one, appointment of Cindy Fossey to vice mayor.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Fossey? Councilmember Prima Tell?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Libe?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes to appoint Councilmember Fossey as the new vice mayor.
Okay, so in line, item eleven two, adjustments to the twenty twenty five city council meeting schedule.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Tonight, we do have for your consideration a schedule of council meetings that we would like to council for twenty twenty five. You'll notice that two of them fall during the summer season, which typically will allow for both the city council and city staff to be able to take vacations, allow city staff to be able to focus on closing out the fiscal year, which ends on June thirtieth. Then the second two are both during the holiday season. So we do have a council meeting that actually falls on a holiday, which is Veterans Day. So we are recommending that city council meeting be canceled. Normally, you would have seen us look to cancel the meeting that's right before Thanksgiving. But because this one fell directly on a holiday, we felt this was a more appropriate day. The second one is a December twenty-third meeting, which falls the day before Christmas Eve. And generally during the holidays, we tend to have less activity happening that requires city council direction or or any appointments or approvals. So we are looking to have city council ratify these suggested dates or have any discussion that you might like to see a different date. Or should you feel like we may not need to cancel, you know, some of the dates, particularly the two in the summertime? We can have that discussion as well.
Okay, so are there any council comments or questions about these proposed dates?
I think I'd like to see March, end of March open up, just because that's spring break for a lot of the families with children in schools. The fourth Tuesday. Twenty fifth.
Clarification, you're asking to cancel March twenty fifth?
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather come on a Wednesday after Veterans Day than do to cancel that meeting so that we can have the March twenty fifth off.
How has, is there any precedent for us moving it from a Tuesday, second and fourth Tuesday?
We haven't had that happen in the past, but that certainly could be an option. Like I said, this happens to be one of those odd years where it just happens to fall directly on that holiday. So we certainly could consider cancelling the November eleventh and scheduling it for November twelfth, so that would make it a Wednesday.
No, you're referring to to March, right?
Yeah, I'd like to have a March date off, March twenty fourth, in lieu of November eleventh, probably.
That would make it March twenty fifth.
Off and November eleventh.
Move it to the twelfth.
Do, do we anticipate anything in March or any large items?
We have, we're looking at a potential schedule for Riverwalk to be coming forward within the next couple of months, so that could potentially be a meeting that's scheduled then. We don't have that solidified at this point in time because there are still some items on the E I R that are currently being finalized. So that could potentially be, you know, one of the larger items that could be brought forward to council within the next month or two.
And then on top of that, I believe we have team building workshops. We also have strategic planning coming up. Just something to consider if we're planning to cancel another one that early. July eighth, it's Fourth of July weekend. That one makes a ton of sense for me. It's the summer. We all want to take a little, a little break there. August twelfth, traditionally, we have done it. That one makes sense. November eleventh, I'm good with the twelfth. Or we keep it off and then we just have a light meeting just before Thanksgiving. And then December twenty third obviously makes sense, but, you know, I'll go with, I'll go with the majority here.
Well, I mean, November, the November one, I'm okay with canceling. And we can always call for a special meeting. We've always made that work during that time. For the March twenty third, because of the twenty fifth, because we do have some team buildings, strategic planning. We have the state of city coming up. It's gonna be a little difficult to take that one off, but, but again, I mean, I would love to hear from anyone else.
Yeah, so you, you want to cancel the eleventh or just move it to the twelfth, like?
Cancel the eleventh.
Just cancel it completely?
And we can always call for a special meeting if, if needed during the holidays. Any thoughts around that, the twenty fifth, because I do want to have a discussion.
I tend to agree with you, Mayor. We have a lot of stuff going on around that time. I think it would be hard to cancel that.
So would anyone like to propose a motion?
Okay, so I'll make, wait, are we asking for a public comment on this one?
We can.
You want to open up for a public comment?
Yeah, are there any public comments in this discussion? No thoughts? Okay.
I have no one on Zoom.
Yes, yeah, we'll close public comments. I'll open to a motion.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for item eleven point two to cancel the November eleventh meeting in, in anticipation of a special meeting. And and then the rest as is. Did I make that motion correct?
I think you're
I can't, it can't be as is because if we're canceling November eleventh.
We are. That's what I'm proposing.
That is.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, so make a motion as is.
I second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Libe?
Yes.
Councilmember Prima Tell?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, so eleven three, annual consideration of city council appointments to intergovernmental boards and committees and appointments to inner internal city committees for the year of twenty twenty five.
Mayor and council, the city clerk at this time will go through the intergovernmental boards and internal committees that we typically have council members assigned to and some city staff. So this will be your opportunity. Make sure you hoop and holler if there's one that you're really interested in so that we know, we know to take you into consideration.
Good evening, mayor and council. In front of you is the list. So we'll, what I'll do is we'll go one by one on each slide. And like Maricela said, if you have a particular one that you want to be a primary on or an alternate on, please let me know. I'll go over the current appointments that we had from, from the prior year. So the name might, might be wrong from right now. So we currently have nine intergovernmental committees and boards and three internal city committees. The first one we have is the League of California Cities Central Valley Division Executive Committee. That one meets quarterly or it rotates among the northern and southern Central Valley cities. Currently, we have Mayor Hernandez as the primary and former Vice Mayor Libe as the alternate. This one is an annual breakfast meeting. It takes place at the League's annual conference in September as well. It's the Central Valley Division. It's led by the executive committee made up of the local government officials who provide overall guidance and direction for C V D activities. These activities provide a variety of avenues for individuals to take the opportunity to exchange ideas and information and share the advantages of cooperative advocacy. So if there's anyone that wants to be primary or alternate?
So currently being the primary, I have been deeply involved with California League of Cities for about four years. I think it'd be great for somebody to step up into the primary position for this committee because you, you do learn a lot and you network a lot in this committee. So if, if anyone's interested, I won't, well, I'm told anyone. Anyone interested in the primary? I know. It's a very low commitment.
I can do it.
And I'll stick as the alternate.
Okay, so I have a council member call as the primary. And council member Libe as the alternate. Thank you. Next, we have the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Special City Selection Committee. This one meets at least once annually at most. And it's here in the Modesto region office. The committee's purpose is to appoint five council members to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District's governing board. We formerly had council member Barbara Martinez Martinez as the primary and former Vice Mayor Libe as the alternate. Is there anyone that would like to be primary?
As the alternate?
See, and no takers. I'll do, I'll do the primary.
And if, if anyone is interested in the alternate position, if not, yeah.
I'll take it.
So I have council member Libe as the primary and council member Prima Tell as the alternate. Next, we have Stan Cog Policy Board. This one meets the third Wednesday of each month at six P M in Modesto. They work together with local cities to enhance communication, cooperation, and comprehensive planning and dealing with regional issues. Please note that the first meeting will be tomorrow, January fifteenth at six P M. We formerly had Mayor Richard O'Brien. We did appoint Mayor Hernandez interim in December just because of the gap with the appointment. And then we had former Vice Mayor Jones Cruz as the alternate. And then we appointed interim former Vice Mayor Luis Libe. So is there anyone that would like to be primary or Mayor Hernandez if you wish to stay as the primary?
Yeah, 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 I would like to continue as a primary and I mean, especially from two years ago, being, having the opportunity to serve for about half the year, I would love to continue that.
And I know council member Call, you've shown some interest. Are you still interested in this committee?
Yes.
So I would support Call if she, if she'd like to be the alternate.
Okay, so I have primary Mayor Hernandez and alternate council member Call. Next, we have the Stan Slough Home, Homeless Alliance Board, also known as Shaw. This one meets first Wednesday of each month at five thirty P M in Modesto. This is the alliance, this alliance is a collaborative board formed to align homeless service, planning and funding among stakeholders in Stan Slough County. The board consists of several community leaders of governmental and non-governmental entities. A primary voting member is appointed by the city council annually. We formerly had council member Barbara Martinez as a primary. And per the old bylaws, our city manager served as the alternate. They recently did an update to their bylaws at their January eighth meeting. They, the language now is that the alternate can be a council member or an official or an executive, executive level administrative official. So now we can have both the primary and the alternate be council members if you so wish. So do I have anyone wishing to be the primary or alternate?
Yes, I would like to take it.
As primary?
Yes.
Okay.
I've done, I've done it for two years, so I'm gonna hold off on this one.
And unless there's interest from another council member, Marisa, do you mind continuing as the other?
Okay, so we'll have council member Prima Tell as the primary and we'll keep our city manager as the alternate. Next, we have the Stan Slough Office of Emergency Services Disaster Council. This one meets once a year or as necessary to make recommendations to local governing agencies on matters pertinent to development of mitigation, disaster preparedness, response and recovery plans, and programs for any potential local emergency. The next, the next meeting will be this Thursday, the sixteenth at one P M in the Board of Supervisors Council, Council Chambers basement. We did have, this appointment is a two-year term. Councilmember Libe and Mayor Hernandez served the two years. It ended in December. So whoever gets appointed to this will serve for two years.
Okay, and we have some interests for a primary. And
Vice Mayor as primary?
Libe, would you like to continue on?
Actually, because of my work schedule from my nine to five, Thursdays have been pretty hard for me to continue on here to be, be effective, so I'm actually gonna step off of this one.
You can be the alternate. So I have Vice Mayor Fossey as a primary and council member Call as the alternate for this one. Thank you. Next, we have Project Resolve. This one meets every other month, starting at eight A M. The first half hour is a networking over breakfast with a ninety-minute meeting, starting at eight thirty. It's the first Wednesday of the following months in this year, February, April, June, August, October, December. And the location is in Modesto. It's a network resolved to, to build and sustain trust and strong relationships between law enforcement and community through our ongoing, ongoing connection, learning, and testing of ideas. We did have former Mayor O'Brien as the primary. I don't know if there's anyone wishing to step in as primary. We didn't have an alternate before. We didn't have an alternate before.
Uh, is there a possibility to have an alternate for this one?
I would believe so, I don't think they have specific bylaws to restrict having an alternate, so we certainly could um select one and then in the event that the primary cannot attend, um, then the alternate would be responsible for attending on our behalf.
So I would like to serve as the primary for this and work closely with the alternate and um with this committee. Um, if anyone's interested uh as serving as the alternate, uh, just a heads up, I I imagine that with my work schedule as well, we'll alternate uh with these meetings.
I'd like to be the alternate.
Okay, so I have Mayor Hernandez as the primary and council member call as the alternate. And then next, we have the Oakdale Ad Hoc Animal Shelter Subcommittee. Um, this one meets as needed, um, we just got an update that they haven't really met much this last year as it just got formed, um, so it pretty much is up when um the animal shelter has a issue or something arises that there needs to be a call for a meeting other than that they don't have scheduled meetings um monthly or regularly, anything of that sort. So this would just be like on-demand meeting if if an issue arises with the animal shelter. Um, we did have Mayor, former Mayor O'Brien at the primary and uh a Riverbank resident, uh, Marky Wallace as the alternate.
Have we heard from Marky about um her wanting to continue?
We have not, so we have not reached out to her, but we certainly will. Um, I know typically their meetings have been, they've tried to focus on a certain day of the week, which is Wednesday, um, which might conflict, of course, with um other meetings that that um council has um nomin, been nominated for. Um, and then usually they try to run them around five thirty or so because some of the folks, of course, also have um nine to five jobs, so if that helps for anybody who might be interested.
Uh, we have council, our Vice Mayor Fossey is interested in being the primary and um, are any of the other council members interested in the alternate? If not, I I think you'd reach out to Marky. Okay.
Okay, then we have uh Vice Mayor Fossey as a primary and we'll reach out to Marky if she wants to stay on as alternate. And then the next two, they're actually, these two uh boards, um, stack of, staff is recommending that we remove them from the an annual consideration list. Um, the first one is an interest group member of the Stanislas County Workforce Development Board. Um, like it says on the title, it's an interest group, it's only an email list, we're not voting members, we're not required to attend. Um, we're just an email list that gets notified of the agenda, so there's, there's really no need to appoint anyone to this to this committee. Um, and then the other one is the Lower Stanislas River Trail Improvement Plan Committee. Um, this committee was formed, may sixteen years ago. Um, it has been inactive for about eleven years. Um, former council member Campbell did wanna revive it and bring it back up, um, but you know, with no entrance from the other cities, there's really no way to bring it up if not everyone's um wanting to do that, so um, for that reason, we're asking that we should just remove it from consideration annually. Um, if it is brought up that we need to meet, we can, of course, bring it to your attention. So that's my recommendation to remove those two.
Agreed, and unless.
Yeah, I remember Cal Campbell uh actively pursuing this one, trying to just to to revive the committee, there was absolutely no interest from the neighboring cities, so I agree, I think we should dissolve both of these uh email blasts doesn't really sound interesting to me, so, yep.
And for the interest group, you know, we'll go ahead and let them know that um either the city clerk's email or my email can be used as part of that interest group. Um, if I see something that might be of interest to all of council, you know, we can certainly forward those emails on to everybody.
And then next, we have our city committees, um, our internal ones. The first one is our Budget Advisory Committee. Um, this one has been inactive for the past six years. I know um last year when we brought it um forward to council, uh, there were talks of uh starting it for the twenty-four, twenty-five um budget. Um, we did appoint uh former Vice Mayor Uribe and Mayor Hernandez um to the committee. Um, we certainly can appoint someone now to to the committee um in talks that it would uh be brought up again.
Yeah, I would, with the uh contract negotiations happening this year, I would like to stay on as the primary.
Okay. Okay. So we'll have um council member Uribe as the primary and then Vice Mayor Fossey as the alternate. And next, we have the um Friends of Riverbank City Parks, formerly known as Friends of Jacob Myers Parks. They changed their name. Um, this one meets and on a monthly basis uh here in the City Hall Council Chambers um at five thirty P M, and it works on projects and park planning and fundraising events. We did have Mayor Hernandez as the uh primary and former Vice Mayor Uribe as the alternate.
Um. The councilman, or Vice Mayor Fossey is interested in being the primary, um, is there anyone who's interested in being the alternate? Are they a formally a nonprofit now?
They have applied for nonprofit status.
Oh, okay.
Got denied by the state, but we'll be working on that.
Yes.
Um, yeah, is anyone interested in being the alternate? Um, if not, I would, I am happy to continue as the alternate.
Okay, so we have Vice Mayor Fossey as a primary and Mayor Hernandez as the alternate. And then next, then finally, we have the Sister City Committee. Um, they meet as needed, location is random, and as as they so choose, um, we have uh Mayor Hernandez and former Vice Mayor Uribe as the both primaries. Um, with the appointment of council member Pimentel, um, thank you, uh, Mayor Hernandez for taking a step back on that, um, we can't have three of you on the, on one committee. So with that, I will let you guys decide who would like to stay on.
Yeah, thank you.
I will start by saying I will recuse myself from this committee.
Uh, and yes, the meetings have been kind of random, um, so we do have a meeting coming up, setting up the bylaws, setting up structure for for the meetings. Uh, Pimentel's been doing an amazing job, so I don't know if if he's interested, but I would like to stay on as one of the primaries.
You wanna stay on?
Okay.
So I have council member Uribe and council member Pimentel. And that is all of the committees, um, if there's anyone you guys wanna go over again or need me to repeat. If not, the recommendation is that we approve the amendment to this list by roll call vote.
Um, okay, is there a motion to approve? Um.
Make a motion that we approve the revised uh appointments?
And I'll second it.
Roll call?
Council member Uribe?
Yes.
Council member Pimentel?
Yes.
Council member call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Okay, so uh comments and reports, um, let's start with city manager.
Just a couple of comments for today, um, all city offices are closed on Monday, January twentieth for the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. And Parks and Recreation will be hosting the second annual My Little One and Me Valentine's Dinner and Dance on February eighth from five to seven P M at the Community Center. Uh, we'll be having a wonderful Italian dinner, dessert, uh, photo booth, music, and dancing, so the tickets are online for forty-five dollars um for one adult and their child, um, and then it's fifteen dollars for additional tickets. And that is all from staff.
Uh, Vice Mayor, would you like to go next? Or comments or reports?
Certainly, um, the Riverbank Historical Society will be having their election at Percos on February eighth, or not election, um installment of their officers on February eighth at six P M at Percos. And um just in case you want to attend our meetings, which we really would love to have, uh, there are every Monday, the first Monday of every month at five P M outside of the state. And then um January twenty-first is our first meeting for the Riverbank Federated Women's Group. Uh, we'll be meeting at six thirty at Scout Hall.
Um, council member Uribe?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, so the Chamber of Commerce is gonna be holding their next small business lunch and learn. Uh, they are gonna be providing food as long as you pre-register so they know how much uh food to get in advance, it's on January sixteenth. It's from twelve to one P M. Uh, and Hector from G N C has been gracious gracious enough to host it at his location over in Crossroads. Uh, that's all I got, thank you.
Council member Pimentel? Thank you, council member call.
Nothing upcoming, but I wanted to talk about uh the Polar Plunge uh that Parks and Rec hosted, it was a great event at the pool, uh way bigger turnout than I expected, and I had the opportunity to partner with Heath Flora Assemblyman, Heath Flora, and a community member Corinne, uh, Nurse of the Year in twenty twenty-three. We were able to raise, uh, we did a plunge, pledge for the plunge, um, and we were able to raise over two thousand dollars for Foster Love Two O Nine, uh, which is a local advocacy group for foster children in our community. Um, and then I was with uh Stanislas Latino Chamber and uh Riverbank Chamber of Commerce for the ribbon cutting at Red Robin, great turnout for that as well, uh representatives from the Clint Talk's office and but Condit's office were there as well, um, so that was really cool to kick off the new year uh with a joint uh chamber ribbon cutting.
Um. It has been quite the month, so I I just looking forward. Um, thank you for allowing me to go to the U S Mirrors uh Conference, there's gonna be mirrors from across the nation attending um in Washington D C this weekend. Um, I am dressed for California winter right now, so wish me luck. Um, it's gonna be snowing out there, but um I would hope to represent Riverbank well and and plan to bring back, you know, any information um or connections that that are made out there. Um, and I I think that is it for now, so um, we are going to adjourn to closed session uh eleven thirteen one, so conference with labor negotiations, uh, person to government code, section five four nine five seven point six, agency representative, city manager Marisa Garcia, employer organizations, Riverbank Ben Management Employee Association, and Riverbank miscellaneous employees. Um, are there any public comments about this item? None, we will now go into closed session and we'll convene after that. Bye, thank you. Bye, thank you.